All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's Committee of the Whole for February 21st. Looks like we have four items on this evening's agenda. Just a reminder that the floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address City Council on matters that are specifically on this evening's agenda. However, it doesn't look like we have any signatures on the sign-in sheet. So, we will then move forward with beginning line item one. And for this, I'll defer to Director of Public Works, Aaron Grosskopf, for the Baxter-Woodman 2022 Water Modeling Presentation. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have a fantastic presentation that will be conducted by Baxter-Woodman. This truly has been a labor of love over the past few months to put together this water model master plan. And in conjunction with Baxter-Woodman, who pulled a lot of the weight, definitely, we, as city staff, have provided a good deal of information, infrastructure details, and other feedback and input after going through a few of the drafts of the presentation. So, we're excited to see it. It really does help us as city staff understand the needs that we have for the next 10, 20, 30 years for our capital infrastructure and plan out well in advance for any needs that we may have with future development and our aging infrastructure. So, without further ado, I'm just going to send it on over to Jason with Baxter-Woodman, who will be going through the presentation.
Right, can everyone hear me okay? Thanks for the introduction. Aaron, again, I'm Jason Raffati. I'm the Lead Engineer and Project Manager for the City of Rolling Meadows Water Model and Master Plan Project. I know Aaron had mentioned this has been the last few months, we've been really grinding this project out, but in reality, this project started in 2018, 2019 with the original build. And we're finally kind of entering that completion territory now. You all have brochures as well, has much of the same information that's in the slide, just in case you can't see the slides, but I'll get going here. So, like I said, back in 2019, we built and actually calibrated the water model. And just a quick kind of refresher on what a water model is, it's like a computerized hydraulic model of your water system, like a living, breathing, you know, we can run your water system on a computer, so we can do, you know, whatever we want to. We can look at all the details of your water system. We can try, you know, expensive capital improvements on the computer and determine if they're worth doing and spending that money on in real life. So, like I said, in 2019, using the city's GIS, we built the water model and it contains, you know, all your water mains, all your elevated tanks, all your pumping stations, things of that nature. We also have, you know, detailed information like when a certain water main was installed, how deep is the water main, how large is the water main, things of that nature. And we also calibrated the water model, so that's when we come out and actually do like hydrant and pressure, pressure and flow testing. I was actually present in 2019 when we did this. So, we test flow and pressure and we kind of adjust the model to make sure that the computer model is showing what we saw in the field that day, so we have a high level of confidence in the results that we get from the water model. The water modeling is like the, kind of the gold standard for, you know, water infrastructure, capital planning. Then, fast forward to 2022 here, that's when we updated the water model with any recent projects and water main that was added or changed in that time period. And then, fast forward to now, is the, kind of taking the results of that water model and developing a master plan and a capital plan. Quick overview of the project, I kind of went over the model update there. With that, we also do kind of an existing system evaluation. So, we look at pressure, which I'll talk about in the next slide. And there are a few items here that the city has no current issues with and are actually excelling, so I will gloss over them as this presentation focuses on any potential issues and things we need or recommend to rectify. As it relates to fire flow and critical users, critical users we define as, you know, nursing homes, schools, things of that nature. So, we can look at the water model and see around those areas, do we have adequate fire flow and things of that nature? Do we need to do anything? And I can say pretty confidently, for the most part, there are no major fire flow and critical user concerns within the system as it stands today. Pumping capacity, the city has ample pumping capacity for now and the future, same with storage capacity. Operations, that gets into some of the items that I'll get to later on in the presentation, but operations relate to pressure and things like that. We'll talk about that more in a minute. And then, emergency interconnects, I think many of you are aware of the Arlington Downs property, and there is some interest in building a kind of an interconnect in that area to help, you know, act as an emergency interconnect in case Arlington Heights loses water supply in that area. And real quick, before I move on down the list, here's a quick water system overview. City of Rolling Meadows has approximately 98 miles of water main in the ground today, an average day water demand of 1.8 million gallons per day, and a maximum day water man, water demand of 2.7 million gallons. That's kind of like your typical summer day, everyone's watering their lawn, things like that, and to approximately 24,000 residents. These last three items are kind of the items, the pieces of data that we sort of push the priority of the capital plan and push, you know, why we choose certain water mains to be replaced before others and things like that. So, water system useful life, I'll get to this in a minute, but most of the system was built in 1950s to the 70s. Most of that pipe is kind of approaching the end of its useful life, and it tends to like to break a lot, so we try to get that stuff out of the ground as soon as possible. Water main break analysis, that kind of is piggybacking off what I said earlier. And then, ultimately, it culminates into the cap, the water main capital plan. So, first item here I'll talk about is pressure. Generally speaking, the City of Rolling Meadows has, you know, really good pressure in the, in the system. On average, 52 PSI with your higher pressure areas being in like the southeast, and then your potential lower pressure areas being on the west side of the system. A quick overview on kind of what determines pressure is, generally speaking, it's primarily determined by the ground surface elevation at that point. And coincidentally, the areas with low pressure on that map there, so the orange areas are kind of the below 35 PSI, the yellow areas are kind of in that 35 to 40 PSI range, and then green being above 40 PSI, and then you start getting to the 50s with the blue and the purple. So, yeah, it's no coincidence that those orange areas are some of the highest elevation areas in town as they relate to the elevated tanks in town. Quick note is, the IPA requires a minimum operating pressure of at least 35 PSI, and there are some areas of town, particularly Brockway, South Meacham Road, that see pressures that may dip below that from time to time. I'm going to move on quickly here to water system useful life. I believe council has seen this figure before just about a year ago. This is kind of what paints the picture for us that a water CIP is necessary, looking at something like this. This figure was developed using the city's water main data, you know, when was the water main installed, what material is it, how many breaks has it had, things of that nature. And so, just a quick overview on what this figure means. On the vertical axis, you have the projected miles of pipe that will reach its useful life and be very prone to failure. And then, on the horizontal axis, you have years, and you can see this figure projects way out, you know, 100 years from now. So, using the city's data, you can see sometime in the 2020s to the 2040s, a lot of the city's pipe is going to be reaching the end of its useful life. So, the orange curve assumes there's no replacement program, and you can see the kind of cost burden that the city could face in those time periods. And then, the blue curve assumes a mile and a half a year, which is roughly 1.5% of the city's water system replacement program. I think that correlates roughly to $3 million a year. That is pretty aggressive, but I think the point of this is to show that you've lessened that cost burden dramatically over the years if you have some kind of replacement program. Any questions on this as I'm moving through? There's a lot of information, feel free to ask questions if you got it.
I do.
Go ahead.
So, we have one scenario here utilizing the model that Baxter created for us. Was there additional models that considered other investments in order to be able to determine if we, for example, doubled the mile replacement program, or if we halved what's provided in blue here?
So, just to be clear, like the actual water model is not necessarily used to produce this figure that you're seeing here. This is actually produced prior to us, kind of, this is about a year ago, prior to us kind of entering the master planning phase and all that. You're asking if there's like more scenarios run with different levels of replacement? Is that, not for this particular figure, no. But ultimately, I think what it's going to come down to is, we've laid out in the master plan, we've laid out a mile and a half of water main per year as kind of the target, and that is rather aggressive, but ultimately, there is an ongoing rate study with Baxter-Woodman right now. And the results of that, which I believe will be sometime in April, will ultimately determine how much the city can afford to do a year. I think this is just a demonstration essentially on, you know, you can see the cost burden is like exponentially higher with no replacement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I just want to make sure that when we do then receive those numbers, that the council's fully aware of all the parameters that are utilized for the optimization of the amounts that are being dedicated per year for our capital, capital projects investment. Thank you.
All right, so again, that figure sort of illustrates the need to put together a water, like a yearly, annual water main replacement program. Some additional data that kind of at least paints the picture on how we zero in on what main to replace. We don't just pick any random main, we try to prioritize it and use kind of a data-driven approach. So, the figure on the top left there is just showing the water system age. So, you can see the vast majority of the water system was installed anytime between the 1950s and the 1970s. And then, if you look at the figure below, you can also see that the majority of the water main breaks come from the mains installed in the 1950s and the 1970s. And that paints kind of a general picture of what we see in the Chicagoland area is a lot of towns, cities, villages kind of blew up in the 1950s, 60s, and 70s, and they were installing water main as fast as they possibly could with not necessarily the best installation methods or best materials at the time. And we tend to see cast iron, ductile iron main in that time period have a really low useful life and fail kind of prematurely. And the last bit here is water main breaks on an annual basis, so we have the data going back to 2012. So, you can see it, there's kind of a steady increase, especially as we break into 2020 and beyond, which is also illustrated by that useful life curve kind of as we're entering the 2020s. A lot of that pipe is entering at the end of its useful life. So, on average, the city pays approximately $5,000 to $8,000 per main break. So, if you extrapolate that out, the city is spending approximately right around, or if not more than $150,000 a year on just fixing water main breaks. And the last bit I'll say on this slide here is, American Waterworks Association kind of has a benchmark for water main breaks and whether, you know, if you're over it, you should really start considering some action. So, that would be 25 breaks per 100 miles, and city's got approximately 100 miles. So, we've got that white line there on the graph. You can see we start dipping over that in the 2020s there. Go ahead.
Are there other factors like weather or that also play into this that we have no way of predicting?
There is to an extent, like the freeze thaw cycle is not very nice to pipes and things like that, but primarily has to do with the materials and the methods of construction back during these time periods. We see it ubiquitous across the Chicagoland area. There's, you know, in some older towns and cities and things like that, there's 1920s cast iron that was just built very robustly at the time, that is in excellent shape in other communities that will hold up for another, you know, 50 years. It just, we see it time and time again with this 50, 60, 70s cast iron pipe, something the way, I think, like the thickness of the pipe and things like that was not as thick as they do it today or even before then. So, that's generally what kind of correlates that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll move on to what we call water main break ranking. So, this is the primary driver of how we prioritize water main projects, and I apologize for this map being a little small here. But we assign a water main break rank to each water main. And what that takes into account is not just how many times has that segment broken since 2012, but it accounts for remaining useful life. Was it installed, you know, a pipe installed in the 1950s that's cast iron will have a lower useful life than the pipe installed in 1990. And we also take into account information from the model, specifically how much flow is going through that pipe and head loss. That kind of tells you how important the pipe is. If a pipe is breaking a lot and it's got a lot of flow going through it, that means that break's even going to be, you know, more of a mess to deal with on the public works end. This is one of our primary drivers. You can see kind of in the Plum Grove Village area is a lot of red there. High ranking means a high priority to be replaced. So, anything you kind of see in red and orange and maybe even yellow are high priority replacements, and a lot of them are in that Plum Grove Village area. And any questions on water main break ranking? It's probably...
Yeah, you know, I just have a quick question regarding water main breaks and running use cases or scenarios with the system. And we have a potential for development on our southern border, which is outside of our control because it's in a community neighboring us, but there's opportunity for them to receive access to our water. Can we use this system to understand what that flow, that connection will do to the flow and probability of creating water main breaks as a result of increase through traffic of water?
Absolutely. That is exactly what a water model is for, and we have looked at that.
And so, with the ability to project potential breakage as a result of adding increased infrastructure and then greater flow, are we able to directly identify that as the root cause so we can use that as a negotiation factor?
That would be a tough case to make. Water main breaks and predicting them could sometimes be more of an art than a science. Frankly, when you do solve breaks, you know, if there's a particular area that keeps breaking and you replace every pipe into it, usually that problem will just move to the nearest, say, 1950s, 1960s area.
Sure.
You know, it's all about kind of stresses within the system and, you know, old connections and things like that. That being said, with the model, again, we have a snapshot at every, you know, square inch of the system, so like you said, we can simulate that flow coming out that area and then look at every square inch of the system and see if there's any kind of pressure anomalies going on.
And so, in advance of having a water main break, if we were to add that connection, we may have to factor in making replacements upstream in advance of the connection because of these probabilities?
It's possible. Mainly, that wouldn't be based on water main breaks, that would be based on just capacity. Do you have a large enough pipe to serve the area? If you don't, we put in a new one, like you said.
Sure. But to Alderman Budman's earlier question about other factors for water main breaks, does capacity and increased flow and maybe an inappropriate sized pipe contribute to additional strains and stressors?
That is very possible, yes.
Thank you.
Further, if we were to increase pressure, would that not also increase the number of breaks as well?
Those are not directly correlated. Increased pressure in the system versus pressure swings, it's a different story. We're going from low pressure to high pressure constantly or just remaining at the same pressure. With pressure swings, you're going to see more breaks, without a doubt. But if you raise the pressure and keep it there and it's consistent, there's not, you know, big pressure swings, like I had mentioned, you're not going to see the breaks.
Thank you. Alderman Beniziano had a question?
Yes.
Yeah. So, walk me through just very briefly, like on a water main break, are we just replacing like where the break is? And then, because again, I don't know how that works. I'm assuming then that just kind of moves the problem down ever so slightly in that same pipe?
The answer to that question is just a big depends. What kind of break was it? Was it a hole? You know, in that case, we'll just replace, it'll be an acute replacement, bring a clamp, clamp the hole, done. If it's a kind of a shear break around the entire pipe, that's when they rip the whole thing out and put a brand new pipe in.
And then, does that, if, so say if it is a shear and we have to replace the whole pipe, does that change the pressure or?
No.
Any, like put more strain on the older pipes that it's connected to?
It's possible, but more than likely, no.
Okay. So, we're not doing, I mean, I know we have to repair the main breaks, but by doing these repairs, are we causing more problems at, on those older pipes?
It's a very interesting question. I think the ultimate goal would be to get that old pipe out, right? So, with this plan and with the, I think with, you know, we have a mile and a half in here, but whatever ends up being, you're starting to make that process of getting that, recycling that old pipe out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I feel like we're very, you know, we have a plan, right? We see this in the red, like we know that area needs to be fixed. We never know where the main, you know, the breaks are going to occur, but if we replace a section and now we've just created a problem because we put a new pipe, and that, that area may not be in a red at this point, but we just made it red. I mean, so is it possible to have like that contingency plan that because we just took apart that maybe was yellow, but because there was a break, we just made it red on this map?
Right.
I mean, is that?
It is possible.
Is that possible to do? Is that proactive?
What we generally recommend is every five or so years, you get this plan updated because like you just said, with replacements, the data changes. So, you know, get this plan updated, and it's usually a pretty decently quick process. We could identify, okay, you've replaced X amount of mains since now, and then we can look at where those problems have shifted, but with the ultimate goal of, you know, in a perfect world, you'd just get rid of all the 1950s pipes today, you know, but unfortunately, it's not realistic. So, you got to start somewhere. And like I said, the data changes over time, and as long as you're keeping track of it and hitting those target areas, that's generally what we recommend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others? Right. I will move to the good stuff here, which is our proposed, these are our proposed water main improvement projects. On the left side, you have the near-term improvements. These are kind of the high priority improvements. Don't pay attention to the color, the color is just so you can distinguish the project limits from one another. So, you can see we have 15 near-term projects identified, and you can see a good cluster of them are in that Plum Grove Village area. And then, on the right side here, we've got kind of the long-term list. So, everything you see in purple on that right side is part of the near-term list, just so you can see what's been done. And then, everything you see kind of in the multicolor on the right side is the proposed long-term projects. And just as you alluded to, let's just say these near-term projects, we get them done in the next 10 years or so, it'd be time to kind of reevaluate and reaffirm that those long-term projects are still valid. But we provide the long-term projects just in case something comes up as the near-term projects are being done, and you can grab one of those and move it up if there's, you know, let's say there's a really bad break there in a year and a half from now or something like that. Any questions on this? This is all, I kind of tabulated in the report, and the appendices is a big list that goes through these associated costs as well. Right. Here is my last slide here, so switching gears from water main to just water system operations, we identified a number of improvements. I know I alluded to early on about the low pressures on the west side. And our recommended way to solve that, without getting too technical here, is to effectively split the system in half and then create a new pressure zone in the west side that's what you see shaded in blue there. So, we would start operating that zone at a higher pressure, and then things on the east side that you see kind of shaded in orange there would more or less remain the same because there are no pressure issues on that side of the system. And the way you do this, pressure, unfortunately, the only way to increase pressure is to add energy to the system. You can accomplish that by either adding pumps or adding like an elevated tank. In this case, you can see on the table on the right side there, a number of improvements required or that we are recommending to increase pressures on the west side. Number one being building a booster station to boost pressures from incoming Jawa, also upgrading pumps, the existing pump stations, number two and five in that zone to operate with that new booster. with that new booster station. Modifying the amount of water coming in from the Jawa supply in that area, that really no costs associated with that. And then there will be some small improvements required on the existing Palatine interconnect there. So that totals out to be just over $3 million to address those pressure issues. And then lastly here, in terms of operations, we talked about what in Arlington Heights, Arlington Downs interconnect pump station would look like. We have it costed out here just over $1 million. Also situated, proposing kind of an area situated right, right by the racetrack property. And generally, just the challenge with costing something like that out specifically with the potential type of development it may be is not every day is a Sunday. So water use would swing a lot. So you got to accommodate for that in, in any kind of pump station. So that is pretty much all I had for you guys today. Are there any more questions?
I have a question. Okay, so, oh, sorry. So if we were to boost, as you say, the pressure in that area?
Yes.
And that area is our highest area for water main breaks? Am I writing, concluding that we're going to have increase in water main breaks if we're going to increase the pressure?
I would not agree with that.
Oh, good.
Just because, I understand where your head's at. Again, with, it's pressure swings that are associated. So going from 40 to 60 PSI all day or, you know, 30 to 60 PSI all day is where you're going to see, where you're going to see breaks. It's kind of like jostling the pipes around. But if you have a set pressure, in this case, that booster station will be set at a set pressure and they would be trying to reach that all day. So you wouldn't have those pressure swings that are associated with causing main breaks.
So it's fair to say this may actually decrease some of our breaks?
It's possible.
By reaching?
It's possible.
Okay.
Question, actually, it's more for city manager Sabo. If we were to, I'm seeing that the Arlington Downs interconnect at estimated 1.25 million. As far as paying for that, would that be something that would be part of whatever intergovernmental agreements we do with, with that whole project?
Yeah, so as, as that project develops, and certainly there's a lot still to be done with it on the Arlington Heights side, but if an interconnect were to be something that ultimately was established by both communities as a need, certainly we would look to it, look to that intergovernmental process to seek the funding for it. You kind of do the but for effective but for this development. Would we need it? Likely, no. So for that reason, we would seek funding to help pay for that.
Yeah, I just ask because that's kind of like the number one concern we're hearing from residents regarding the project is additional costs at the city of Rolling Meadows because of that project. So, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a great overview here in the packet was great, too. What's something that caught my eye in the write-up in the packet was clearly with breaks, we're getting non-billable water. And I'm, and that's why I want to ask for your expertise on it. It's like if we, whatever we have agreement, wherever we're receiving our water, obviously it's from Lake Michigan, there's a threshold of about 10% of lost non-billable.
Correct.
From your great write-up, it's, we're right at that. Is there a type of penalty scenario? I'm all for this. And I know my peers know that I've been preaching, we've got to do infrastructure, infrastructure for a long time and our funds, and we've all talked about that. I know we've got, we've got the plan going. But is there like, if we go to 11% because we're right at that threshold now, does our water rate go up? Like is there some type of penalty that we would start incurring? Because I just, that 10% caught my eye and I'm like, I wonder what the impact is if we go to 12%.
Sure. Essentially, what I, Illinois DNR does is try to keep track of revenue water to make sure we're not wasting Lake Michigan water, like you said.
Right.
And you also said that city of Rolling Meadows is at 9% and the threshold is 10%. As far as official kind of penalties for that, I believe, and Lauren, you actually may be able to correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't believe there's an actual penalty, but you do need to be looking into it and trying to have a kind of an active approach of trying to fix the non-revenue water problem if you're above that. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we don't really...
Would you like to come up to the mic?
I would love to.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, so we don't really see IDNR penalizing communities that do go over 10%.
Okay.
There are plenty of existing communities that receive Lake Michigan water that are far above 10%. What IDNR appears to be shifting towards is having those communities develop an action plan. And generally, they recommend water main replacement. So they may be more forceful with requiring communities to have more aggressive water main replacement programs. That's what we're seeing in a lot of other communities. So being right at that 9%, close to the 10% threshold would, you should be encouraged to be proactive in this sense.
Great. Thank you. One thing I do want to note, just while there isn't a financial penalty, we still are paying for that water by paying Jawa for the flow. So to the extent we can minimize our non-revenue water, especially that, the water that's in a leak or some sort of scenario like that is to the benefit of the overall financial health of the system.
Yes. Great. Thank you. That was Alderman.
Perfect.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, too, while we still have everybody up at the microphone is, in the report that we had, it showed that the use of Rolling Meadows waters decreased over the past five years. Is that in relation to that 10% threshold or is that different?
No, I believe the reduction in water usage is primarily with new water fixtures that have lower flows to them. Showerheads, for instance, were limited in the amount of water flow in them as well as faucet aerators, which help reduce flow. Based on Backstrom Woodman's analysis and just in, in speaking with other municipal communities, we're seeing that the reduction is pretty consistent in many different communities because of the more efficient use of water as well as having public education around reducing water waste.
I see. So if everybody's reducing, then that's why our 9% is remaining constant across?
The 9%, I would bifurcate the two. I think the 9% relates more so to water that we're not accounting for on the revenue side. So for instance, usage for, you know, when a fire hydrant is open and the fire department is using water or water that might be escaping the system and we're not billing for it. So you, you know how much water you've taken into the system and how much you've paid Jawa for, but then you also know how much revenue you've brought in for the water that's been used. That 9% reflects that discrepancy between what we've taken into the system and what we've built for.
Thanks for the clarification. Got it.
Any other questions or comments regarding this water modeling presentation? If not, Jason, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just have a couple of final remarks really quickly. It's just giving a thank you to Public Works. I think a water model is only as good as the data that you put into it. Over the years, they dealt with me and a lot of data requests and a lot of, a lot of data requests and they were pretty much able to provide everything and more than I asked for. So much appreciated.
Thank you. And Director Grosskopf, I hope you didn't go far because I believe you're going to be up here joining us for the second item on the agenda, which is the Route 53 environmental noise assessment.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Wonderful to be back talking about the Route 53 sound barrier discussion. A little bit of background on this, just to recap where we're at. Back in October, we had a COW meeting and council at that time gave direction to proceed with getting a noise assessment done on the Illinois Route 53 corridor in between Euclid and Algonquin Road. We came back for council approval with a proposal from Tran Systems. They completed the analysis back in mid-December and today we are here presenting the information with you. So what did they find when they looked at the corridor? They found a substantial amount of noise. So 13 sites out of the 25 actually read over that 67 decibel threshold, which is the level that the federal and state levels use to evaluate their noise threshold. As in, if it's above that level, then it requires some sort of abatement measure. So like I said, 13 of those 25 sites did exceed that. We had some noise actually up to 79 decibels. And what you find when you hit that level of noise is that when you're actually outside, you cannot have a conversation, the traffic is actually too loud and it also could impact the inside of your home as well. So you cannot have your windows open and have a conversation on the inside of your house. So there is that level of noise in some of these areas. So there is a heavy correlation that they found between obviously the distance from the edge of pavement on Route 53 and the noise that is being heard in those areas. There are two outliers, Site 260 and Site 10, both are by the interchanges. They had kind of spiked up noise and were a little bit further away from the edge of pavement. We did receive a wide variety of range from 51 decibels to about 79. The, the range itself is kind of correlated again with the edge of pavement, but also that first row of receptors, they block off noise past that 200-foot mark that they're looking at. And after that, the noise levels drop off dramatically. So after about that 200-foot first row of receptors, we're looking at pretty substantial noise drop off to around the 60 decibel range. So just some summary analysis, like I said, 13 locations, we're above that 67 threshold. Findings conclude that yes, they do have noise out there. It can impact their outside house and their inside of their home, no open windows. Properties that are out of the direct line of sight, like I said, and behind that first row of receptors, did see much less severity of the impact. The first row of houses will gain the most, the most from noise abatement, so they're going to be the largest benefactors of this. And we also did analyze and look at locations per council direction at that COW back in October to monitor noise on Sunday. So we did receive some baselines for that going forward, so we can have that for our records. Possible abatement scenarios? Local scenario. So Tran Systems evaluated the area and found that an IGA between IDOT and the city would be the most beneficial way to actually get a wall put up. The city property is just not conducive to it. If you were able to stall it on IDOT right of way, you'd be able to get a solid wall going across the entire length of the corridor, breaking off and kind of expanding, ending, terminating the wall where the interchanges are at a reasonable area. The cost of this was estimated to be around $6.4 million. And again, that would be local only. The original price that we presented was around that $9 million mark. That was not taken into consideration in IGA with IDOT. That was to install the wall in city property. They found that to be not feasible with the breaks in the wall that would need to happen as long, as well as the utility locating and just the extenuating factors for that. Scenario two is type two project. This is done federally and some states have it. The state of Illinois currently does not have a type two project scenario. This is where the state will go through and systematically evaluate their roadways to see if they qualify for noise abatement. Illinois has shown no interest in this and is not currently performing this, so we have no opportunity to gain this level of funding. At the moment, I should say. Type one project scenario, this is the most feasible out there. This is going to be triggered by an IDOT expansion and that can be a major change in the vertical profile, such as raising a bridge, major change in the alignment, in addition of through travel lanes. So those three factors are what would trigger a type one project. This is the best and most likely opportunity and that is going to be the development of Arlington Park. With that development, there's going to be potential traffic impacts and opportunities, specifically on that Euclid and 53 interchange, where they would have to expand that. That type of scenario would trigger a noise analysis as well as a noise modeling and a noise abatement analysis, which would be required for the state to receive funding and pay for this wall. So there is a lot to go into that. Tran Systems' recommendation, ultimately city staff's recommendation, is to follow up with IDOT and the stakeholders when this development starts to move and actively pursue that they do this noise abatement analysis and see what we could actually get. The bottom line for this is, this is the most probable scenario for benefited receptors to actually get that noise wall put up. There is an alternate scenario that Tran Systems provided us. It is essentially just a screening wall. This would go on city roads, substantially less costly alternative. It provides you no noise abatement whatsoever or function in that matter. This is just simply to put up in the homes that have no blockage from Route 53 to screen the corridor for them. So in conclusion, staff recommends pursuing scenario three, working with IDOT and other stakeholders and during the redevelopment of the Arlington Park to potentially pursue that type one traffic noise abatement study and get that process rolling. With the traffic noise levels as they are, it is probable, it's not 100% certain, but it is very, very probable that we would actually be, be able to see IDOT build that sound wall for us if that type one project was triggered. So at this point, that sums it up. I'm just looking, where staff is looking for direction on how to proceed with the different scenarios that we laid forward. And if there's any questions, we're, we're here for you.
First, let me open up the floor for any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this. Alderman Beniziano?
So, so if IDOT decides that they need to redo Euclid 53 kind of interchange right there, would that still trigger for this project along 53? Would that still qualify it? Because we want obviously further down than just that interchange right there.
Yes, it would. It would take into consideration the entire corridor.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? You want to walk us through the considerations that you brought forth for the council to explore? Is that what your intentions were doing or do you?
Sure, I can, yeah, the considerations were essentially whether or not you would like us to proceed with pursuing more information on the local scenario, which would be pursuing an IGA with IDOT and trying to, to work out an agreement with them to police a wall on their right of way and then locally fund it. And then scenario two, realistically, right now, there is nothing of the state law for that. It's something that we could try to talk with the state about and see what their interest is in it. But as I said earlier, right now, they're not actively pursuing anything. And then the type one project scenario is also what staff recommends doing is just working with IDOT and other stakeholders during that redevelopment period for Arlington Park and pursuing that. Again, the alternate scenario as well is in that consideration.
So I guess if I could take two steps back and when the noise study was conducted, did we just have acoustic meters out and they were just measuring the decibels? Right. And so we don't know necessarily, I know you mentioned the interchange was a problem area, but living near the highway, I hear a lot of jake braking and it occurs at the exchange or the interchange, isn't it? Because semis are trying to reduce the wear and tear in the brakes and using that loud burping sound in the cars. Will, will a sound wall impact the decibel level of a jake brake versus just the ambient traffic noise that we're picking up? I mean, is it, is it effective or worth it?
I would say yes. I would have to do more research to give you a definite answer on that. I think overall, the noise abatement wall would be to reduce that level, like you said, that constant level of traffic noise. I think it would help any noise, but I would have to get back to you on whether or not that specific sound would actually be abated to a level that somebody would not hear it.
Thank you. Just some hands up. Alderman, O'Brien, and Bessesi.
So just a question that the mayor's question had me think of. Is there on average, like that a sound barrier decreases decibels by 7%? Like, is there any study done that way, like in this section of 50? Because I know there was the one, it might actually be more of a screening. Now that we've seen the picture, I think that was from Addison or wherever the example was, is up by 53 in Lake Cook-Dundee. And that looks, it looks great at first, but now it looks atrocious. There's missing boards. It's become more of an eyesore. So I'm guessing that's more of a screening than, but is there any industry standard where if you put it up, we would expect a reduction of seven decibels?
I don't know if there's an industry standard for the level of reduction.
Okay.
That information would be provided to us after that noise abatement study was actually fully flushed out.
Okay.
Then they would be able to provide us, because they'll model what size wall they'll have and what type of reduction in noise we would actually see. So after that is completed, then we would be able to provide an accurate account for actually what the reduction in decibels would be.
Great. Can I just, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to mention one thing, that the wall that exists, we actually did research on the stretch of 53 up as you get to Lake Cook Road and how did that get installed? And the, the background on that was when the interchange was installed at Lake Cook Road, that was a type one scenario that prompted at the time IDOT to install those sound barriers. The wood wall barriers were the construction methodology at the time for those types of barriers. And as we all can see, they're just breaking down and in need of desperate repair.
All right. Alderman Bessesi? Thanks, Alderman.
Sure. Okay. I'm pretty much in the agreement with your staff projection or suggestion. My question, though, is on this screening wall, what type of costs would, I mean, do you have any ballparks or anything like that? And then how long would it last? That type of stuff. Because realistically, by the time they get around, you know, if we do go with the first scenario, I mean... you have any ballparks or anything like that? And then how long would it last? That type of stuff. Because realistically, by the time they get around, you know, if we do go with the first scenario, I mean, we're talking probably at least, I would guess, seven years or more for that, and these residents have been wanting this for a very long time and having to deal with this for a very long time.
Yeah, so the screen wall is definitely a short-term solution. It would stay, since it would be in city property, it could stay up for as long as we would like it to stay up for. It's really just about the routine and long-term maintenance that we have on that. It is a concrete, precasted wall like a noise wall is, but it's smaller, on a much smaller level. So as far as the cost is concerned, I don't have a ballpark number I could give you. I can certainly look into it and then provide you with one. I can do some research on that, but it would definitely be a short-term solution until that noise abatement actually be.
Right. I would also be interested in how much noise that solution would.
The screening wall will provide you no noise abatement at all. It's just to block the traffic view.
Oh, just for the view? Okay.
It would be similar to the fencing that exists on Frontage Road near the Coptic Church. As you're coming down Frontage Road along 53, there's, it's not as substantial as the example provided here in Addison, but that is an example of a screening wall, where there isn't any noise abatement provided, but it does provide the screening from the view of the vehicular traffic along 53.
Oh, okay. I'm more concerned about the decibel level of the screening. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman, O'Brien, and Mikail, do you have comments or questions? Okay. Alderman, O'Brien.
Just to make sure I was understanding also, Aaron, for those things that trigger the type-one project, do all three have to be met, or it's any one of the three? And I'm guessing that's from an impartial engineering company, not, or I mean, like that IDOT does business with regularly, but it's any one of those three? It's not all three?
Yes, just any one of those three would trigger the type-one project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman, O'Brien. Alderman, Mikail?
This is probably, I can't answer this question, but is there any indication on if you went to IDOT and said, "This is what we're looking at. This is our noise study that we have here," how long this would take to actually start coming to fruition? I just, like, if the barriers are coming or the Arlington Park development, are they going to push off this project because they know that they're going to have to redo everything in a couple of years, sort of like that bridge presentation we had a few months back? Do you know what I'm saying?
So you're referring to if we went through the local scenario and tried to draft an IGA with IDOT?
Yeah.
They would evaluate it, I believe, and take into account, because according to that scenario, a lot of those roadways, especially those bridge structures, would have to be improved in order to support the actual noise abatement wall. It's a good question. I don't know as far as would they or would they not want to go into an IGA with us at the moment because of that potential development? That's something that only a discussion with IDOT would reveal to us.
But we don't have, like, a timeframe that that usually happens?
I would not be able to give a timeframe on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Mikail? Alderman, Sinica?
Thank you, Mayor Gallo. So when this was brought forth, I know that, I had mentioned before that both Alderman Budmats and myself, we have residents who are along that 53 route, and on both sides of the highway, there are individuals who are in support of a sound barrier and those who are vehemently against it, especially if it's just screening. They don't want any type of barrier whatsoever. I know at the October cow that Mayor Gallo had mentioned, are there other strategies that we could pursue besides a barrier? I think that it was really good for us to do this study because now we know what to expect. If IDOT reviews this, then it will trigger that sound study, which would require a sound wall, so we know that a sound barrier is likely to take place within the next 10 years. And so if this isn't something that residents require, then I would be interested in a fourth scenario where city staff is working with IDOT for alternate scenarios to decrease the noise levels that maybe don't require a sound barrier. And if that is just not cost-effective or feasible, then that's something that I would want the council to be aware of, to say, for us to be able to decrease the sound impact, it has to be a sound barrier or nothing at this point with where we are with technology. So that's what I would request from staff, is in your conversations with IDOT, in your conversations with the Arlington Downs property transition, that we also explore alternates that maybe aren't necessarily a barrier. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Sinica. And to anyone else, have any other questions or comments? To that point, you know, we do know that the governor has made a big push to encourage over a million electric vehicles on the road, and so hopefully with that transition influx, then the decibel level will drop just by the pure adoption of quieter vehicles. Chief Nowacki, I'm going to put you on the spot for a quick question about banning jake brakes in communities and the success level of that.
You're talking about, like, trucks and that use the engine, basically, to slow the vehicle down. Obviously, it creates a lot of noise, a lot of, like, residential areas restrict that. It's hard to enforce because it happens at all different times. I don't know if that answers your question?
No, it does. I mean, so the reality of trying to enforce something like that, knowing that our interchange is, knowing where the bottlenecks and sound dispersment are created are as a result of the braking, and particularly with our semi-trucks and intermodal transportation on these highways.
Yes, so I've worked with the tollway before, specifically regarding that, and they, the tollway, is very open to putting signs up that say, "No jake braking." However, in the end, we ultimately decided not to do that because from what they have found is that actually increases it.
Out of spite?
Yes. Ultimately, we decided not to go that route. So is that something that IDOT would be possible looking into or to accomplish with us? It is potential, and I can reach out and have that in our conversations, but I don't, I'm not sure we want to.
Yeah, we're not looking to exacerbate the issue by any means. I guess if we just keep it quiet, then maybe we'll get less of that. You know, as asphalt technologies are increasing to make quieter roads and rubber technology for the wheels themselves, personally, I don't think we're in a position to be funding a sound barrier, especially at this time, not knowing whether or not it's going to actually make a beneficial impact on the loud disturbance noises that occur from the highway. The ambient noises, yes, absolutely. A sound wall will do something, but is it enough? And knowing that within five years, there will be a large-scale development to our north, which will more than likely trigger some sort of augmentation to Illinois Route 53 and encourage IDOT and local communities to get together, to collaborate, to find solutions that make it quieter within each respective community that surrounds 53. So I would say, I think patience is the virtue in this conversation from my perspective, but I have to open the floor up to the council and find direction for staff to go.
I'm in agreement. Yeah, I think we just need to kind of do this wait-and-see. We have the information, which is key, and I'm very interested in five, 10 years from now, we kind of analyze, or, you know, analysis this and look at Sundays and event days and see what big of an impact this has made to the community, but I think this is just a wait-and-see.
Alderman, Sinica?
Yeah, no, I disagree with that. I think that we should absolutely be planning to have some sort of sound abatement, whether that is a sound barrier, and it's something that should happen within the next couple of years, whether it's through IDOT, through this development, or something that we start from our, with ourselves. Yeah, just because I have residents who have been asking for this for over a decade. They said they are very much looking forward to having some light at the end of the tunnel, and I think that, with the data that we have here, it's very likely that it will probably be through IDOT through this development.
So let me rephrase. So what it is, is we will not take any immediate action ourselves in terms of physically pursuing construction, but we should start the dialogue and collaboration with the appropriate agencies and neighboring communities to figure out what we can do collectively to help alleviate the sound that comes from Interstate 53 and 90. So I think staff's direction should be to start fostering this conversation, start developing a plan of attack or an approach, knowing the prospects that are on the horizon for the overall region, and then provide guidance and insight as that moves back to the council when the timing is appropriate.
Absolutely. That scenario definitely takes into account staff acting proactively and having those conversations with IDOT and the other stakeholders essentially as soon as possible, because that's when you're going to have the groundwork. And we do have a substantial amount of groundwork already laid out for this, so we're in a good position.
And that's good. Does any other in the council have any further suggestions or recommendations to that?
Well put.
You're good?
It just said, "Well put."
Okay. Thank you. Then I think that'll wrap up this particular presentation and this subject. And now we'll move on to modifying city codes related to tobacco sales. And this, I think we have another presentation, and this is with Joelle. You're going to be presenting this one?
I am.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about some considerations for modifications to our codes related to tobacco. This came about as a result of some text amendments that we were talking about with zoning to define and regulate vape and tobacco shops, mostly in response to some of the smaller one-off shops that were starting to take place in some of our multi-tenant shopping centers in close proximity to each other. So we'll go through a little bit of our existing city codes. I'll talk about the zoning ordinance amendment that was proposed. I'll compare that to a model ordinance that we were provided with from another homeroom community and something that we can kind of get some ideas from and then seek some council direction and see if there's anything we want to work on a little bit more. So our existing city code does include two chapters related to tobacco. Our business licensing regulations, of course, regulates all businesses, and for the most part, that is in Article One, and Article Two would provide some specific regulations with regard to tobacco, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Chapter 70 is mostly our police section, which deals with offenses, and they use this section of the code for adjudicating or processing violations to that code. As I mentioned, we did process a zoning amendment, and just to remind you what that was about, we did do some additional definitions for tobacco, vape, and CBD shops to list those uses as special uses in the C1 and C2 zoning districts. And basically, the only changes that were proposed to regulate that is, A, to make it a special use, which goes through a public hearing process before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then approval of an ordinance by council, but the language in that code really restricted them by allowing only one in a multi-tenant building, and then also imposing a 2,000-foot separation between similar uses. It did not look at including any kind of a separation between that use and any other type of use, just 2,000 feet between two similar tobacco uses. Again, the chapter 22 section of our code is for business licensing compared to chapter 70, which is by the police department. Chapter 22 is regulated by our community development department, and they implement that code. The license period is an annual period between January and December. We do have provisions through the licensing that we go through a process upon application to evaluate the information provided in the application. So we look at, our health inspector looks at the health, safety of the business and their operations. Our building code officials go through and make sure that the space is safe for occupancy and meets our building code requirements. Our fire prevention folks will take a look and make sure that the exit lighting and other fire prevention measures are in place. The provisions in the code also do provide an opportunity for our police department to do some limited amounts of investigation, but historically, that has not, our police department hasn't done that as a precursor to the issuance of a license. They do that more on the back end with chapter 70, which I'll talk about in a minute. The other interesting note to point out is that for business licensing, the code provides for one license for every business, except when those businesses include the items listed on the screen, which are liquor, tobacco, food, and fuel. So if you're a fuel station that sells food and you have tobacco and liquor, you would have to get each one of those business licenses. The authority to deny applications rests with the city manager or the designee, and we can fail to issue business licenses based on the things that are listed in this slide. So if you're a business that failed to correct any prior violations in the past, when you held a business license in prior years, for any use that's prohibited by the zoning code, we do go through that zoning review process, so we can deny a license based on that fact. If the premises is in violation of any other city code, we can also look at when individuals or corporate officers are convicted of felonies that aren't pardoned or the sentence having been served, when individuals have been adjudged to be mentally incompetent. That is included in our code. Also, and I know we've used this in the past, to not necessarily deny a license, but it is a way that we secure payments on past debts, is we can hold a license until all outstanding debts are paid to the city. The city manager in the business license section is authorized to close any business in any emergency-type situation or after any hearings for violations of any part of the licensing provisions. And the authority to suspend or revoke those items are also listed there. If you give false statements in your application materials, you violate any part of the city code, you're convicted for the felony or misdemeanor, if you fail to pay your fines, and also if you fail to allow any city official access for a scheduled or other inspection where we need to go in because of evidence that we need to do an investigation of their site. There is also another very brief section in chapter 22 specifically related to cigarette and tobacco, and I didn't go into the history, but it looks like that section used to be quite a bit larger, and by some action of a prior council, some parts of that were removed. And the section is now very short. In fact, there's only two paragraphs in that section. One of them kind of speaks to what the police department could base their denial of a license on, and it's quoted there. And basically, it talks about good character, and I'm not real sure how that is judged. I mean, I think that could be something a little hard to determine. Other codes have more specific things that talk about what constitutes good character, so that might be someplace we want to improve upon if we want the police department to be more involved upfront in the issuance of the license and not so much on the back end for failure to comply with regulations. The section also provides our health inspector with the ability to go in and continue to make sure that it's kept in a clean and sanitary condition. It's also worth noting, if we were to expand the business licensing provisions, and this would probably be the section to do it, when we improved our section for video gaming, it was in this part of the code. And as you might recall, there's quite a few additional regulations that were added to that section of the code. Chapter 70, again, is the police department enforcement part of our code, and it mostly deals with regulations on the back end, and it's mostly evaluating whether businesses or individuals are either selling to or trying to purchase if they're less than 21 years of age. So sales to anybody less than 21 is unlawful. In that case, the mayor is designated and may suspend or revoke a business license after any hearing. If the license is revoked, the code does provide that we can withhold licenses. Again, this is the business license. This section of the code refers to the business license, and we have the ability to suspend it for one year. It also makes it illegal for anyone under 21 to purchase tobacco products, so it's the actual person making the purchase. Chapter 70 also deals with the Clean Indoor Air Act types of restrictions, and it kind of repeats what the state law already provides. It talks about where indoor smoking is restricted, is listed on the slide on this page. And then it also lists the exemptions, so private residences, tobacco establishments that were in place prior to January 1, 2008, if they follow certain regulations. And then it does provide kind of an exception to that if, allowing them after January 1, 2008, if it's located in a freestanding structure and the smoke cannot migrate to another part that is, where smoke is prohibited. Also lists restricted in nursing homes, or provides an exemption for people if they're in a nursing home, if they request it in writing, provided it doesn't impact areas where smoking is not allowed. It also provides for smoking sections in hotels, so there is an ability for hotels to have some number of the units, as long as they don't exceed 25% of all of the rooms as smoking rooms. St. Charles is the community that we were able to St. Charles is the community that we were able to take a look at. Again, it's another home rule community and they have all of their regulations kind of consolidated into one section of their code, which was a very nice way to be able to see everything in one place. They also, in addition to restricting smoking, they do also have some things that allow for more smoking in certain areas. They do allow indoor smoking with certain tobacco sales when it meets other criteria. They do include more of the upfront licensing provisions, similar to the way that we currently do liquor control. So our police department would be involved in making sure that whatever criteria we come up with would be satisfied. So in St. Charles's case, they are not eligible if they're not a U.S. resident, if they're convicted felon, a panderer, if they had a prior revocation of any license, if their license became ineligible because they violated some section of the code during their last license period. And then they also talk about the licensee must be in the store or whoever is in the store also has to meet the same criteria as the licensee. So it's not a situation where somebody can come and get the license and then, you know, the 10 people that you employ can act under that license. So it's there, you know, I'm not, it's probably a lot harder to enforce and make sure that people are living up to those expectations. Something that we heard a little bit when this was discussed by council was whether there was the ability to restrict locations within certain distances of schools or other sensitive uses. St. Charles does do that, it's listed here. They restrict it within 100 feet of a school, childcare facility, or any building that's used for educational or recreational purposes that are targeted to people under 21. It also talks about prohibiting anybody from the age of under 18 from selling and that if you are between 18 and 21, you can sell tobacco products, but someone that is 21 or older must be on the site to assist. If you're under 21, this is another section that I think they provided more smoking opportunities or defined things that I'm guessing they may have had issues with. They did define that if you're under 21, you are authorized only under the direct supervision of a parent or guardian and only in that parent or guardian's residence. Vending machines, that was something new to me. I didn't know they had age-checking vending machines available, but this code apparently requires that if, when they license vending machines within the community, they have to be equipped with certain locking devices that would prevent operation by anyone 21, less than 21 years of age. And their, their structure is more like our tobacco commission, or more, more like our liquor commission. So they have a tobacco commission that kind of regulates very similar to our liquor commission. So real quickly, I think, again, I mentioned it was nice to have everything consolidated in one section of the code. I know Judy and the administrative staff have been looking into, working with our codifying people to kind of consolidate that anyway, so that might just happen anyway, but I did want to point that out and I think that's something that we would potentially like to see. I think our focus for your discussion could be on those seven or eight St. Charles code differences to see if that's something that you're interested in and we can kind of step through those one by one. Back up here one. So I don't know, Mayor, if you want to go through these on a case-by-case basis and then we can move on to the next slide, that might be the best way to capture that?
Yes, and I wanted to preface by saying that at least for me, going back to the genesis of this conversation, and for me, it was the fact that these tobacco and vape shops have the ability to open up anywhere at any time with very little oversight from the city. And I was receiving phone calls and comments about the lack of appeal in that and that residents were displeased by it. And so whatever we can do as a council by evaluating maybe what St. Charles has outlined or what we can do to, to limit the amount of these facilities or at least have better oversight and discretion to them being open, that's what we should try and accomplish here with this. And so if we want to begin with those seven with St. Charles, I'm happy to. With line item number one, it says defines and allows retail tobacco dealer, product sampler, or specialty store where smoking is allowed in conjunction with the sale of tobacco. Anybody have any inherent issues or comments with this? I see Alderman O'Brien.
I just have a clarifying question, hopefully. We're talking about standalone vape, tobacco, CBD stores, because I know there was confusion last time, like, I don't want to impact Juul, because we have that whole thing, people buy their booze there, I'm totally fine with that. These are standalone, like we've got here and the other ones there in the hop.
Yeah, so that, we need greater oversight with the standalone tobacco vapor shops, because Meyer falls in that same category with other retailers in, on their campus. We don't need to be impacting that. Also, I, what I, I don't want to see the ability for the transactions on premise to be obstructed or made difficult. I just want to be able to have the city have greater control over, over the actual development and deployment of these locations.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to convert with the standalone ones, thank you.
So when it comes to the first item, to define and allow the retail tobacco dealer, product sampler, or specialty store where smoking is allowed in conjunction with the sale of tobacco, anybody have any objections to, for incorporating this into our language? I mean, do you have any thoughts on this, Joelle, based on the way it reads now?
I, you know, they'd still need to do the standalone business and things and I know we have had people ask that question before and we've, you know, our current code does not allow for it, so it's really a matter for council consideration.
Go ahead.
I just need some clarification here. Are we talking about allowing people to smoke, like if they go to one of the, one of the standalone shops or clearly states that they're selling CBD and vape and all those things, that they could smoke inside that facility? Like they could try it out and be like, this is my thing and I'm going to leave with it or not?
That's, that, if they meet all of the other criteria, so any of the multi-tenant shopping center vape shops that we have been seeing recently here would not qualify for that because they're not a standalone. But if, if somebody came along and wanted to build a standalone or they had a standalone facility, then they, they could, they could smoke the product in the store.
And these seven items that we're going through are just provisions within the license itself? So that, that's how we're looking at these, in case that helps for perspective.
Okay.
Can I just add one quick note? So that, just one consideration in a scenario, because I know when you read the code language like that on its face, it's like, how could this ever apply? The scenarios in which that applies are standalone cigar shops that have a cigar lounge. And in some ways, you can carve out the specific type of tobacco products, so you can exclude, if the council were to want to have that kind of a use, you can exclude all other types of tobacco products except for cigars for purposes of operating a cigar lounge, if that is something the council so desires.
So we, we had a cigar lounge they had left as a result of COVID. Did we have any interactions with them that, where they had difficulties operating within our current existing framework?
I wasn't aware of them being here and leaving because of COVID, yeah, okay.
Quick question, and I know I'm kind of deviating a little bit, but tobacco and vape, if we're to come to an agreement on creating a license for this, would they be two separate licenses or does vaping fall under tobacco?
I believe our current code lists tobacco, lists it all together.
So it's not like liquor, tobacco?
Right. If we wanted to separate it, we would need to create that separation.
I know, I'm only asking, because what if somebody only wanted to open up a vaping and like a paraphernalia shop, would it still fall then under, under what we're trying to construct here? And the paraphernalia, I mean, like the glass apparel or whatever you call it, the glass paraphernalia? Yeah. So I just want to make sure that we can encapsulate those.
In the zoning definition, it was all together.
Okay, okay, good.
As proposed.
All right, so continuing on with the license provisions, if nobody has any issue with the, being able to define and allow a retailer to have access to tobacco where smoking on premises is allowed. Alderman Bessesi, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have, have opposition to this, however, I do like the suggestion that city manager Sabo and kind of carve it out. I don't want, you know, I can see the cigars for like a cigar lounge being something, a applica, a time when we would want to do this, but I'm not sure some of the other things that we have under tobacco, we would want to allow it.
Right, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, manager Sabo, but what you were saying was this line item here enables the ability to carve out through this statement. So what this line item does is, is giving the city the ability to carve out a tobacco store for in-house smoking as opposed to anything else. That's what this line item offers.
Okay.
So then moving to the next item for license provision, identifies ineligible people to obtain tobacco licenses, including non-U.S. resident, convicted felon, convicted panderer, a person whose license, oh geez, a person whose license or similar regulatory ordinance was revoked for cause, a person who at the time of application for renewal of any license issued would not be eligible for license, a person whose place of business is conducted by someone else unless that person possesses the same qualities as the licensee, and gee, a person who does not own the premises for which the license is issued for at least thereon for a full period for which the license was issued. So I, I like, I would like to see these included. I think the question is, does the council, can they, can you think of anything else to be incorporated? So I see Alderman, Benese Allen, and O'Brien.
So I think this is one of the items, for the basis of my concern when, when we, when this first got brought to our attention, is that the, there's no background check like we do for our liquor license, that we're just giving out the tobacco license and we don't really know who we're giving these licenses to. I know that we asked Chief Nowacki at the time, you know, they do their spot checks and, and everything has been fine, but what happens in between all of those spot checks? We don't necessarily know who these business owners are. They could have, you know, broke every ordinance in another town and then just came to ours and opened up another shop. And so this was definitely one for me that was very important, that we have more oversight with police and doing background checks and, and doing all of these things that, very similar to like we do for our liquor license.
Yeah, and I do believe we'll get there with background checks.
So I think those two are kind of tied together, because if you do the background, then these are the provisions to it.
Okay, Alderman, O'Brien?
Great, thank you. That was, I was similar to that question, it was not to put chief, it's, I guess it's chief's night to be put on the spot. And you could probably just phone a friend to your peer in St. Charles tomorrow, which is totally fine. Do we have any estimate on what type of lift this would be on RPD from a staffing perspective? Like granted, we're probably going to have some type of limit, we're not going to say 25 new stores come on in, but I have no idea what it takes to run a background check as thorough as your department does.
No, it definitely would take some time, but it's something that we could definitely do, like so we do for our liquor licenses now. And we do throughout the course of the year, we do compliance checks at all our tobacco, vape shops. We actually use confidential informants that are underage. We do a report, actually I have a grant that actually pays for that. But regarding, you know, background checks for, you know, businesses that are just selling tobacco products, we could definitely do that.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, thank you. So what, back to Alderman, what you were saying is utilizing line item two and the subtopics within it as part of employing a background check, an official police background check?
Yeah, I think, I think that was, it wasn't actually in City of St. Charles requirements, but I know it was further up, rolled back a little bit more, so yes.
It's actually lower in the packet, it says the council interested in having background checks completed.
Oh, I was going the other way.
Yeah, it's page 126.
Okay, scrolling the opposite way, yes, so yes.
Okay, so I think one thing to take note of is that the council would like to see an official background check occur.
Prior to licensing.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I ask one quick clarification? I want to make sure we get this correct completely. Is that for tobacco vape shops only or does that apply for any, any business that has tobacco? So that would be Juul, Walgreens?
Again, so the genesis of this is to control the ubiquity of these tobacco vape shops? So I don't think we need to go putting a background check on Juul, Osco, or the gas station, right? That's not their primary mode of business, it's peripheral and ancillary to their model?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but most of those establishments are gas stations, Juul, Meyer, they have liquor license, we're doing our due diligence already. So, I mean, they've gone through all of those checks.
Yeah, and again, I would just like to see the control of the outcropping of these facilities. So let's just stick to that, yeah, appreciate that. Third item here from a list of provisions perspective, restricts locations within 100 feet. And now this we'd have to consider based on being for tobacco vape shop standalone, not Juul, not Walgreen.
Again, I think a lot of what I'm hearing is this is all applying only to the standalones.
Correct, yeah. And so I would, I would like to see this adopted, within there is, do the council have any questions or issues with 100 foot?
Yeah, so John, I know Alderman Bessesi and I have gotten a lot of feedback from our residents, obviously because of the one that we're kind of sitting on and their location so, so close to the high school, right? And that's the demographic that would be more likely to entice, right, versus like Kimball Hill. So that is more than 100 feet, but, I mean, and that's something we can do on the variance, just on the fact that it's not wanted in that location? I mean, that's kind of to us how we want to approach it, but it, 100 feet minimum, yes, but I will tell you that the residents do not want it anywhere close to the high school, just because of the high schoolers. I mean, you all have been in high school, we've been there, done that, so, so that is definitely a concern.
Yeah, and I think that the, you know, we were talking about it all being, you know, special use in 2,000 feet, 2,000 feet apart and all of that, that kind of puts the controls on, on that topic, which is why we did that. But from this standpoint, I know we're talking about standalone, but I don't care whether it's standalone or not standalone, 100 feet's awfully close to a school. And maybe there's something where somehow we can carve out certain sizes of businesses or something like Juul, but I'm thinking about all the different schools and that's really the only example that I can think of is the Juul versus, versus Kimball Hill, because I don't believe any of the other spots within that strip would be in 100 feet.
Would Carl Sandberg, well, you've got the townhomes in the middle now.
Yeah, and I was thinking about Carl Sandberg too, because it's actually more impressionable at a younger age than high school, but not necessarily elementary level.
Well, I guess if there's, yeah, if there's school at the back, at the little fellowship church or whatever.
So the question becomes then, does the council want to determine a different benchmark for the distance? The other thing I would like us to consider is, within this line item, not only around childcare facilities or schools, but other standalone vape and tobacco shops as well.
I like the 2,000.
That, that, it's not on here, but that, I was going to propose that, absolutely.
And I believe we have that included in the zoning consideration, that's coming back next week.
Yes.
But if we, and if we need for condensing and keeping compiled in one place, I would like to see it here, but if it's already included, that's great. Alderman O'Brien, you mentioned 2,000.
No, I was, I'm in favor of including the 2,000 between, I'm even comfortable saying that we just, we cap it and say, we'll allow six in. And we, everything that came before us, before the 2,000, only one in a multi-tenant building, I'm in full support of that, adding this stuff to it. And I think we can just kind of similarly like we did with gaming, is we say, we'll allow six in and if there's six, don't even come knock on Martha or Joellen's door because we're at six, like do your due diligence too. I think we can control it that way. From based on the residents' calls I've received, they don't want to see many more of these, let alone three along Kirchhoff.
Right, and, and definitely, just like we did with the, with the gaming, only X amount within each particular area, so to speak, where we have limits on, just like the gaming.
Alderman, Budman?
So with gaming, we don't have any, we don't have any slot machines like in the front window of the stores. They're all in areas that are just shielded from the public view. Same thing with the glassware and drug, vaping products, which would be considered drug paraphernalia, really should not be out displayed in the front window of the store, just like we wouldn't, so that those need to be shielded from the public, just as it would be, we would be doing with the, with the gaming provisions, with the gaming machines themselves. So whatever we do, we want to... So, um, whatever we do, we want to provide that same, that same, um, front image of the store that we, we limited the, um, ability to the size of the, the signage available, if I recall, for the gaming, et cetera. So same thing, so that we don't have huge, you know, drug paraphernalia just in the front window for kids to walk past, my grandkids to walk past and say, hey, grandpa, what is that? Because I'm not going to explain it's proper use.
So, to your point, and that's a good point, um, you know, we have sign or ordinances to cover things, uh, signs within the front windows. Would this fall in this discussion or is that somewhere else?
I'm, I'm kind of staring at Melissa because I know in the video gaming, uh, sign, signage is provided in the state statutes, which provides the, an ability to deviate from some of the strict scrutiny that sign codes have with regard to being content neutral and, you know, if we, if we allow a certain type of sign or size or location of a sign, we're limited in our ability because of certain legal past cases of saying you can't do it in this instance. That's different for gaming because gaming is regulated by the state. So we'll, we need to look into that, but I do understand your point and I think it's worth investigating a little bit more.
You can still make, um, content neutral regulations though with respect to size of signs allowed, um, certain area of window display that should be allowed so that you can see into the facility, things of those nature that, things of that nature that doesn't deal with the actual content of the sign, it is definitely allowed.
So to that point, I'm going to say something crude and I hope we're all mature about it, but for materials, uh, that are sold to adults, they had to be behind counters when at convenience stores when I was growing up and because of the, the age you needed to be to buy it. Can this be applicable since the age you need to be to purchase this stuff? It should be not visible to the public, is that?
Sure, the display that you were talking about, about that, those are regulations that can.
But it doesn't fit in this particular conversation for the licensing provisions? I mean, that's somewhere else.
No, it can.
It can?
Yeah.
Okay.
That can be a regulation applicable to the issuance of the license.
Okay, then we should, yes, consider that in this conversation here. Alderman, McHale?
Well, same with when we were going through the, um, the marijuana shops where they can't have marijuana leaves on their.
Those are state regulated though.
Right, but does, can that, because I mean, when you drive down Plum Grove Road, you see the big huge marijuana sign outside in front of the, the vape shop. So does that not apply to vape shops?
Interesting.
And can it, can we put that in our code somewhere?
So there's a vape shop that is displaying cannabis products.
Cannabis leaves and products and stuff like that, yeah.
That's probably an enforcement, uh, but it, it might be a gray area too, so that might be something we need to close up a little bit. Because the can, you know, the vape shop.
Though they don't sell it.
They don't sell it, but they're promoting it, yeah, I, um, well.
And they're in their logo and their business. I don't know if that's going to be an issue.
Yeah. Again, we get into those content neutral things, so you can have 25% window signage, you can, you know, you can, you can regulate the size and the location and then it applies kind of equally to everything in the district unless it's licensed, it sounds like. And then if we can provide kind of that distinction, that would be something for us to look into more.
And so continuing on here with the fourth item and the, the item states prohibits employees under 18 from selling tobacco products and requires someone over 21 on the premise anytime someone between 18 and 21 is working to assist them with tobacco sales. So for, I, I don't know what the rules are when it comes to selling tobacco, but I, I don't want to make it difficult for transactions to occur. I don't want to make that an issue. I want the businesses to operate and be business friendly. So whatever we are legally bound to do based on this, these items, this merchandise is what I think we should abide by.
I agree.
Do we have to be 18 to sell cigarettes to people or do you have to be 21?
Melissa's like, I don't.
I'd have to research the state law, but it sounds like the council's direction is to default with respect to whatever is required by the state law. And I, I don't know when St. Charles code was drafted, um, at, you know, if it was recent or more antiquated provision, so.
I, I did a quick search and according to the ILCS 675 pertains to no person under 16 may sell any tobacco product, electronic cigarette, or alternative nicotine product at retail.
Yeah, so for me, and I'm just saying this, I think any high schooler who has a job and they chose to work there, I don't want to make it difficult for the business and the operations to have to call in another employee as a result, but does anybody have a difference or?
Don't you have to be 18 to buy cigarettes now?
Well, yeah.
It's 21 for booze and 21 for marijuana.
I just asked Alderman, O'Brien, did I miss something?
It's 21, it's 21 now, tobacco.
Really?
Yeah, the, the state enacted a recent law.
Oh, all right, I didn't know that.
Yeah, no, I thought you joined the military, you buy cigarettes. Like I thought you could do that too at 18.
I thought maybe I missed something when I said, I thought it was 18. Okay, see, that's how, that's how heavy smokers we are.
So back to the conversation about the actual sales aspect, does anybody disagree with just keeping it whatever the state?
Yeah.
Then we'll just stick with what the state mandates.
Okay.
Fifth item is allows use of tobacco for the under 21, provided it's under the direct supervision of a parent or guardian and in the privacy of the parent or guardian's private home. I don't know that we even want to get involved in that.
Not related to business licensing at all.
Yeah, if you're 21, you're great, good for you. If you're not, I don't, we don't sell.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll strike number five. Line item six requires tobacco vending machines to be equipped with locking devices that prevent operations by persons under 21 unless the establishment prohibits entry by those under 21.
Silly question, are there such things as vending machines?
There are. I was talking to Manager Sabo about this a couple of weeks ago because you have to have a, a valid ID or driver's license and it scans it in the back of that QR code and it determines your date.
Takes a change.
I, I think we should just well alone stay alone, away from to vent vending machines for tobacco because I don't want to see them cropping up in random places that we wouldn't even consider, but they show up there like a car wash or something, right? Like I just, so what do you guys think about trying to just ban the vending machines if some, if we can to some degree?
Yeah, because I would hate for them to show up in a laundromat and now, I mean, I didn't know.
IDs getting stolen.
Yeah, I didn't even know they existed still. I mean, they're not what they used to be. So, yeah, I don't want to have to explain that to my kids either.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, I'm.
I would concur.
So if we want to stay away from tobacco vending machines, do we have to consider this line item in any way or do we have to consider something altogether different about tobacco vending machines and not having them in here?
I think we can explicitly state that tobacco vending machines are prohibitive from operation anywhere within the city.
So I think we could augment line item six to say just that, what Manager Sabo said?
That's your intent, sure.
Tobacco vending machines are explicitly outlawed.
Do we have any no?
No, not that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Hopefully not.
We'll find out.
I, I'm not aware of any tobacco vending machines within the city.
I just didn't want to see them start cropping up at car washes.
But if we have one no, I mean.
I'm sure they'll bring it to our attention if they do.
So if they have one, they have to have a tobacco license. So we would be aware of that, I would assume, hopefully.
And we, I mean, we conduct the spot checks, so I can confer with the, the police department just to verify if there are any within the community. I don't, I don't want to put Chief Nowacki on the spot for the third time. So we'll, we'll definitely do the research on that. And certainly this is going to come back to the council for further considerations, so we'll look into it.
And then moving on to the seventh, the final line item, now this is establishes a tobacco commission comprised of the same membership as the liquor commission. Is this a necessary action or can it just fall under the liquor commissioner's guidance or whomever's?
So if you were to establish a mechanism like that, our city doesn't have a liquor commission, we have the liquor commissioner. So the, the question for the city would be, do you want to establish? You can also be the tobacco commissioner. The liquor commissioner could be the tobacco commissioner.
And the liquor, the licensing, the business licensing provisions are almost already laid out like that where the city manager and/or the mayor already are vested with all of those rights.
So we, we won't go about setting forth a tobacco commission or?
What that would do is allow the city council the authority, similar to like a liquor license, the authority to increase the availability. I know we've talked about capping licenses, but it, it would be, um, when you do it similar to like the liquor license, the city council would have a say in increasing it. Otherwise, you could also keep it at just a cap at six or whatever the council decides at this time. And then if the license meets all the regulations, it would be issued administratively without coming before the city council.
Alderman, Bessesi?
Would that be given that we're not above the cap already?
Correct, correct.
If we're above the cap, it still has to go before us to raise the cap if we wanted to do it.
It would be declined unless they, they got the council to change.
Okay. Make a special request?
Yeah, to increase that cap.
So we'll stick with it falling under the umbrella of the liquor commission.
So, yeah, I think unless there's other thoughts, I mean, if this provoked any other thought about what about, we can incorporate that as well. So I think, um, legal and staff will get together and decide where these provisions make the most sense to make modifications, whether it's zoning or licensing or both. And then we'll talk to Manager Sabo about how best to bring that back to you, whether that's a cow or, or just bring the ordinance for consideration. But it will continue to, I presume we want to continue to hold second reading of the special use text amendment, okay?
Did we come up with for number three? I know we started on a tangent.
Restrict locations within 100.
No, I'm saying we would never go off on tangent.
No, we didn't determine the, the, the distance. We incorporated the, the vape shop into the language.
Right.
But we need to determine a distance.
The distance, right.
And you said 2,000 feet.
No, no, 2,000, there's 2,000 feet for the distance between two. So they can't have one right next to each other, but, um, we need to determine a distance from one of these facilities, a school. I don't think.
So do we want?
I mean, I think 100 feet is nothing. I think it needs to be increased personally, so.
And that's what the council wants to determine here.
Yeah, so 100 feet, I mean, that's, that means that shopping center right on Kirchhoff, right behind Carl Sandberg would, that's more than 100 feet.
I'm sorry.
Usually it's property line to property line.
Okay.
So, you know, we can do what we did for the special use and analyze some areas to, you know, so what I heard you say is the location on Central, in your opinion, is too close to the high school.
Central, yeah, that one for sure.
So we can evaluate what that distance is and apply that to other schools and daycare centers and quote sensitive uses and come back with some sensitivity diagrams for you to, to evaluate.
I'm okay with that.
That would, that would work.
So we, we will not set a distance tonight, we'll get feedback.
We'll, we'll analyze it.
Perfect.
And so that's, there's a pin in that. There are bold and italicized items to consider on the next page. You want to continue going through those as well?
Um, I don't, I don't have that report in front of me, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. You know, it's just like, is the council interested in, in directing the consolidation of the code into one section?
Oh, okay. I think my point to that was I believe there's already some suggestions of doing that in the near future, so I would rather get the content to what we need it to and then if we want to consolidate it into, um, individual sections later when we do the comprehensive consolidation, that would be the better time.
Okay, that's, that's fine. And then I, Alderman, it looked like you maybe had something to share or say, okay. Any other considerations on this subject at this time, over to Manager Sabo?
I have one question, I want to make sure my notes are spot on. Was there a desire for a cap or a number set for the cap? I don't have a note of what the cap number should be.
So I think we should go off of the diagram we already have. We already did that work. And then I think to have the information of how many of these businesses are already in those.
Already operational?
Already operational will be beneficial because I have no idea. Um, and then that would give me a better idea of how many to cap it at. Because I don't want to say four and then we have six already.
We do have six.
Okay, see, I have no idea.
We have six already. We had one in the pipeline that would not be allowed by the new language that was proposed.
Okay.
The second one is the Central Avenue one that would be allowed unless otherwise restricted by further actions that we take.
Okay, so do we want to make a determination on that number this evening or have that conversation when we have a, well, you know, we have a full count already, but, okay, so do we want to decide tonight or do you want to wait until we get, uh, the, the sensitivity maps at the next conversation?
Do we have no?
Six.
Six.
I'm okay with six.
I'm great with six.
All right, Alderman, Bessesi, do you have a?
Yeah, I, I, uh, my thinking on it is we do exactly what we did with the, with the gaming. We have those, uh, those areas and everything and we see where the ones that we currently have and how they kind of disperse through the city. And then we determine what our caps are by area, just like we did with the.
Yeah, well, what I'm hearing right now, and we're going to have a show of hands, but I, I'm hearing the number six and based on what's already existing. And so those who are good with the current count of six, uh, show your hands. And then, so I think we're going to go with six and we don't need to go through that exercise because we're just not going to look for any more to entertain the community beyond six.
I would like to mention though, should any of them go out of business, that we lower the number right away.
So to follow up with Alderman, Bessesi, I would still like to go through that process because I don't want four on Kirchhoff, you know, and it may not meet the requirement, I don't know, but maybe over by Walmart on Algonquin, there is that 2,000 feet and, but then there's four of them over there.
So you're in geographic accounting.
Exactly, like we did with the gaming, that only two in that corridor, two on Kirchhoff, you know, we limit it. Even if one goes out of business, if there's three, we know what our cap is, just like gaming.
So just to answer that question a little bit, we have two on Kirchhoff, two on Plum Grove, and two on Algonquin. And, you know, those would meet the, so if we adopt the, the revisions to the code.
There you go.
Like one, if one of them goes away, somebody could come in and take their place as long as they met the new provisions, if we adopt those provisions.
Plus they would be potentially a special use.
And, and they would be a special use.
Well, because of the 2,000 feet.
Mm-hmm, but they'd also have to meet the 2,000 feet. So if, you know, if six is where you're comfortable.
And that's fine.
These zoning restrictions would kind of keep it that way.
That makes it easy if it's two, two and two. I'm good with that.
Yeah, as long as it's worded that way within each one of the.
It isn't, but we could, I mean, it just so happens it is, but we could amend that zoning regulation to create or make, I don't know, licensing. We'll put it somewhere where we'll create those zones so that we have two in each one.
Yes.
And it's a relief from another exercise, which we no longer have to do.
Right.
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
That would take care of the Central Road one too.
Yeah.
So any other questions or comments or discussion points to incorporate into this conversation and this topic?
They're located.
Nick's drawing a map.
No, we're just trying to discuss where they're at in Plum Grove.
Okay, all right. So if, if there aren't any more items to discuss in this, Joel, and thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate this.
Absolutely.
And then this will bring us to our fourth and final item, which is for Chief Nowacki, and we'll talk about the implementation of automated license plate readers as viable crime prevention strategy. Chief, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I know I'm last on the list, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I will try to move pretty quickly today. Uh, I do have a PowerPoint, I want to thank IT for showing me, I know I'm talking about I do have a PowerPoint, I want to thank IT for showing me, I know I'm talking about technology, how to move my slide forward, so we'll see if this works, so please be patient with me. But the reason for the presentation today is, I'm really looking for council direction if the Rolling Meadows Police Department should move forward and look at implementing license plate readers in Rolling Meadows as a crime prevention strategy. I think it has a lot of promise, I know a lot of towns around us, I think in the Daily Herald today, there's two towns that just approved that. So, I say, I am going to talk a little bit about technology. Since I started here, I've always embraced technology to improve services, to increase efficiencies and be more effective. Since 2016, implemented a lot of, I would say, technology-heavy programs within the police department, started a online overweight truck permitting program. Basically, that program, we've, you know, generated tens of thousands of dollars in fees with pretty much zero staff time, it runs itself. Implemented an online overnight parking program, electronic ticketing program, crash reporting. Just recently, city council approved our relocation repossession program. In just a couple of months, we have issued hundreds of relocation permits, generated thousands of dollars in revenue for pretty much zero staff time. So, and I believe license plate readers are another area of technology, we could definitely move forward, I think it'll reduce crime, I think it'll prevent crime, make for Rolling Meadows to be even a safer community in which it already is. I also think that the license plate readers sort of fall into the category of smart city technology. I thought this was sort of interesting, it was one of the Police One magazines, one of the trade magazines. And basically, it mentioned by adopting smart city technology, police departments can become more effective by saving staff hours and costs and providing better services. This can build a stronger relationship with the community. A smart city is one where the data collection by sensors and analytics are used to facilitate services for better performance, improve sustainability, lower costs, and decrease environmental impact. So, I said, I think there's a lot of potential for license plate readers, and I'm going to sort of show you why here on this next slide. This is, I'm just going to play a couple probably seconds of this, it's a news cast that's about a national trend, we all heard about the carjackings, increasing stolen autos. This definitely ties into license plate readers. I mean, we all know how, oh, let me go back. Well, I guess I'm going to skip over this one, because I can't play it. But anyway, it basically, it basically talked about how carjackings are at like...
What do we know?
Auto theft, the data shows motor vehicle crime more than doubled in eight of the thirty cities surveyed, you know, amid the pandemic, that's from 2019 to 2022, tripling in cities like Memphis and Chicago. Carjackings, auto theft or attempted auto theft by force of threat also shot up during the same timeframe.
That's good, thank you. So, we definitely have all seen that out of news, carjackings are a real problem, stolen autos, and how is that related to Rolling Meadows? So, this is going to be a perfect example, this is how it's going to tie it all in. This was a break-in from mid-December of last year in Rolling Meadows. This is a really brief clip, after I show this, I'll sort of, there's two things to watch on this, and I'll show, sort of show you how it all ties in. Wassim, can you play that for me? I'll try it. Well, anyway, it's, it's, it's a break-in, it's about fifteen seconds long, that's how, that's how fast this break-in happens. But one of the most important things, in the background, you can see through the broken window... Okay, right here. Right there, that car circle, that's actually a stolen car out of Chicago. After they left this establishment, they broke into four more businesses in Rolling Meadows. After Rolling Meadows, they went to two other communities, they did other break-ins, like I said, and how this ties in with license plate readers. You can stop there now, Wassim, thank you. If we had license plate readers strategically located in the city in real time, we could have got a notification, this is about two o'clock in the morning, officers would have got an alert of the stolen car, the location where it's at, a description of the vehicle, we could deploy those officers to that scene, hopefully locating that vehicle before they even committed a crime, or caught them in the act, or while they were going to the other locations to commit crime. So, license plate readers would be very, very effective. And like I said, I definitely think it's something that we should probably move forward on if the council agrees on that. How does this technology work? Well, license plate readers, they provide real-time alerts when stolen or one of vehicles enter Rolling Meadows. These real-time alerts when vehicles related to, also amber alerts, silver alerts, so vehicles related to, you know, children being abducted, individuals, elderly individuals maybe suffering from dementia, Alzheimer's, you know, they get in their family vehicle, they go run to the corner store, and then they're not seen for hours, the family calls. We can enter those vehicles into the database, you know, as individuals being missing or endangered. And if a vehicle like that entered one of these locations where the license plate reader camera read the license plate, we would be immediately notified, so we could return some of these individuals to their family. This is another area, this was actually a car, just in January, we had a couple catalytic converters stolen, that's also a crime that's sort of been on the increase. They also hit, same offenders, hit Harper College and about two other high schools in the area. The vehicle used right there has stolen license plate. If we would have had a license plate reader in that area, we would have been alerted of that vehicle, and like I said, we could have deployed officers that have seen, hopefully preventing those crimes from occurring. This is just an example, this is Shorewood, they actually used a Flock Safety License Plate Reader, they located a missing individual. I know I'm moving fast, so if you need me to slow down, let me know, but one of the, a lot of opponents to license plate readers, the reason that they don't like license plate readers, they believe that they're a violation of privacy. A couple of things, if we did deploy license plate readers in the city of Rolling Meadows, we would ensure, obviously, those would be on public property, they would take a photograph of the vehicle on a public roadway, there really is no expectation of privacy on public roadways. If we did implement that program too, I would ensure that any system that we did use that the police department would actually own that data. That way, it would not be sold for commercial purposes or given to third parties. Like I said, it would be the property of the police department, so we would have control of that. I would also ensure that we had really strong retention policy, where after thirty days, if that information wasn't used in an active criminal investigation, that information would be completely deleted, you could not recover it. So, that would hopefully address some of these privacy concerns. And also, like I said, license plate readers, they do take human bias out of the crime solving by detecting objective data and detecting events that are objectively illegal, such as stolen vehicles. There's approximately sixty cities just in Cook County that use license plate readers, like I said, two of them, I think there's two more as of today. I think there's a hundred and eighty in the state of Illinois, so it's not, it's not a new trend, like a lot of agencies are going in that direction, because it is working smarter, using technology to our advantage.
Anybody have any questions?
Alderman Sanoka has one, and Alderman Budmetsch.
Thank you, so Chief Nowacki, when it comes to the usage of the data, I know you just mentioned that the city of Rolling Meadows would own the data, and then, but we also talked, you had also some examples about working with other municipalities as well. Is your future state of this particular, of these data points to use with other municipalities or other state agencies? And if so, like what, what do you envision there?
My vision would be, we would use that with our other law enforcement partners. I know, I believe Palatine, Arlington Heights, Elk Grove Village, Schaumburg is going with license plate readers, so we would have to have an agreement with them, that we would share that information with that law enforcement agency for law enforcement purposes. I don't see why we probably wouldn't do that, because then they would share the information too, so if we strategically located these license plate readers, we might get a notification from, say, a Schaumburg camera if a vehicle is actually coming into our jurisdiction, and then that way, we could leverage more of these cameras to our advantage.
Go ahead.
So, if I can just interject there, CGI, which is criminal justice information, we as a municipality are not allowed to own the data. The data belongs on a state agency like Illinois State Police, they own the data, we get access to it, and we have access because we participate with them, but we are not, municipalities are not allowed to hold on to the CGI, the criminal justice information, we just have access.
Okay, so, and I guess then, that was going to be my second question, is where this data... So, I understand that if Rolling Meadows was to have a policy that says, we'll delete data after thirty days or something like that, then if we're sharing this data with other municipalities, we can't necessarily guarantee...
We don't get to share it, we get to log in to see it, so all the data is captured from the camera, funneled to the Illinois State Police. We can use our servers to connect to their database, review the information, but the Illinois State Police has a mandate of ninety-day destruction, so they delete it in ninety days.
So, then the, the data protection is essentially held at that server, under that data protection, under that data storage?
Yep.
And we wouldn't necessarily need to invest any other resources into maintaining that?
No, so for like those police data or Big Brother individuals who are not favorable to having them be surveilled, they have to understand that PII, the Personally Identifiable Information, or PHI, Personal Health Information, and CGI, Criminal Justice Information, is not allowed to be owned on our, on our network. We can access it through the state police network.
Okay, so that's sound consistent?
Yes.
Good.
And certainly, if this moves forward, we'd have that all completely clear, clearly called out and work with our city attorney to make sure that everything is in accordance with the law.
Thanks.
Alderman Budmetsch?
So, today in the paper, there was something about, I think, displaying another... So, I mean, I guess it's incumbent upon us to talk to our closest neighbors, so if they're implementing this so that we're doing this in a sensible way, that we're not having cameras across the street from each other, and that we can... So, I'm assuming that that will be part of this rollout, that we will talk to our neighbors who are also doing the same thing?
You know, correct, I've had discussions with other chiefs, and that's, that's one of our concern, trying to, we have had some crime come like off the expressway and so forth. So, we were looking at, like I said, the cameras, you know, there is a cost to them, so we don't, it's not an unlimited amount of funds that we could just put cameras everywhere. So, we'd like to make sure we could strategically locate it, like if we could put a camera, say, at, you know, say Kirchhoff and, you know, Euclid, that might actually help our neighbors to the north a little bit, where they might have a camera some other location where they would typically maybe put one there, but since we have one there, and if we do, if we do agree to share our information, that would actually help us to cover a greater area, because we would sort of leverage these other department cameras too, in those vicinity.
So, if I can make a suggestion, the Tamer Clayton Act, which Chief, I know you're familiar with, this is kind of the genesis of why AI-integrated cameras for license plates have been created, and that's for the postal service worker that was killed on the job on the Dan Ryan. I only know this because it happened to fall on my birthday, but it's December fourteenth of 2022, the Illinois State Police and the Department of Transportation initiated an IGA where they received, ISP received twenty-two and a half million dollars to work with twenty counties and Cook Counties included, to collaborate with the municipalities within the counties, to establish a network location based on crime detection and upticks in crime. And so, I know that Chief will be working with ISP in order to collaborate, and in turn, ISP is working with the neighboring suburbs to develop a heat map signature source based on current crime, and then based on where they predict the trends of crime we're going to be cascading out to as a result of the implementation of this technology. To that point, Chief, and the cameras, do we know, if the council does approve it, are, are we going to implement cameras that are OCR, which is Optical Character Readers, or AI cameras?
You know, I haven't gone in that deep of the woods, I said, I wanted to make sure that, like, there's a lot of issues to address and to look at. I wanted to make sure that, that I would have support from the council to start doing that. I know, like I said, one of the cameras, and I was looking at, was solar powered, so, you know, it'd be a green initiative, you know, we've introduced hybrid vehicles to the police department, we have an electric gate TV for patrolling our parks, so I thought that would also be, be a good thing to do. But like I said, I didn't go too deep into it, because I just wanted to make sure that I had some support before I went that far.
And so, I think we'll find unanimity upon support from this council for this. What I would like to see before we talk about the expense to the community is collaborating with Illinois State Police, because there is twenty-two and a half million dollars available, and this program is going until December of 2025, and we know that the crime within the metropolitan area of Chicago is only cascading its way out to areas like ours, and we should absolutely be on Illinois State Police radar, given our access points and the number of communities that they can impact. And so, when we get to that point, I think we should look at utilizing the revenues that are available in channels that, that have put aside funds from the state, so that way, it doesn't have to be at an expense to us as, as the tax, taxing residents.
Yeah, I definitely, I definitely look into the grants, we do have a grant consultant that I work with, they do get us a lot of grants, so I know there's a couple that were just released, so I would definitely look into all those type of revenue streams and so forth.
Yeah, and I will, she asked me to pass your contact information from the state police that manages this particular program. But so Chief knows, I wanted to have a show of hands for those in favor of supporting this initiative. So, Chief, you have a perfect role.
Thank you very much, I told you I make it fast, so I didn't talk too fast.
No, thank you. All right, then that concludes the four items that we had on this evening's list. So, this brings us just to the last and final point, which is for me to entertain a motion so that we can go into closed session under Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act regarding personnel. And so, I'd like to see a motion for that.
So, move.
Thank you, Alderman Benizano, thank you, Alderman Besessi, for the second. Is there any discussion about going into closed session? If not, then I'll ask for the clerk to please call the roll.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmetsch?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Benizano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. We do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session other than concluding the committee in the whole. So, with that, everyone have a good evening.